Uh-huh, here he is.
Doesn't look good.
He always brings forth.
It's actually good. It's actually good. Just easy to carry that.
We got the email, right?
Which one?
With the resolution, so.
I did, but I haven't.
That's fine, I had copies anyway, so.
Well, did you bring up copies for?
I did in case you.
You must have just sent it through today.
I suppose, yeah, he was gone today and I asked him to send it yesterday.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure you had it in case those who.
Okay. My phone says it's seven o'clock, so. All the May twelfth, twenty fifteen city council meeting order. All council members present. Engineer Ryan. Attorney Rids. And citizen comments. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on anything that's not already on the agenda? Again?
From Gibson Sanitation. And would like to see if we can get our license added to for commercial pickup in the city again.
This is on the agenda? Actually is on the agenda. So is there, are there any other changes to the agenda? The amended agenda?
I was just gonna say real quick, the two items that were added again are. Okay, are the counteroffer for the full craft property and then the appointments. Rear appointments to the planning commission and part of the constable rep. Those are the two items that were added to the agenda. So that would be under eight legal deed and under eleven H under new business.
So we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept consent agenda as printed or are there any changes that anyone wish?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Which one? Doug and Ross both?
Did you say go ahead? No, that's my draft.
I'm not sure, I think it was.
I didn't hear you say atomic.
Go for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. So we would move on then. We have no presentations. So we would move on to engineering. Update on feasibility work for the first street reconstruction project. Joe, can you give your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a very extensive report on the first street project this evening. We're still working with the sanitary sewer activities. We've gone through all the videos that the contractor did deliver to us during the month of April. And we documented what property services owes account for. Turns out there is still a little bit of the main line televising that we, has not been done yet. And we've been in contact with Rota Ruder and they're working to get that scheduled to come back out and televise the last part of that main. Then we'll be going through it and summarizing the properties that have been accounted for within the project area where their service locations are. Those that haven't, for those that haven't, then we'll have to prepare a notice. And the city will send out a notice of those properties telling you that we want to televise their sewers and we'll need to get access to their house. And the contractor will work to coordinate those properties, getting those services televised so that we can document the condition of all of the sewer main within the entire project area. Make sure we've got all the properties accounted for so we know that when we reconstruct the street that we've got any sewer issues identified and addressed as part of the project.
Do you have any idea how long this process might take? Will this probably be done by next month's meeting or before?
I would, well, the main line televising should be done by next month's meeting. But in order to get the property televising, it will take a little longer. We'll have to get the notice out, we'll have to work with the administrator to get that notice out and then get those individual lines scheduled for televising. So I think that process will be a little bit.
Until the main line is done, you're not certain which.
Which properties we need to notify for the access to their homes.
Are we gonna get this project completed this year or are we just gonna get dragged on to next year?
At this point, I would say it's more than likely twenty sixteen construction.
It's taken longer to do the identification of the lines. Because I think one of the things with the first, third street project was, I'm not saying that was rushed when most things are looked at, but this time around, by just nature and there's more lines to televise, it takes longer. But we want to make sure that we have as much of that identified as possible and obviously it takes longer, it takes longer. But it's kind of like do it now or do it later, it's better to get it done in the front.
I agree with you, but.
Yeah. What we've actually done is for the project area, you know, all the properties that abut the project area at all, you know, some have sewers on the front, some have sewers on the back, but there's no record really of where the services or the homes are located. So rather than just televising along first way, we've also got to televise on the blocks on either side as well and make sure we get that whole area accounted for.
That's really a problem that exists all over town and little by little, as projects like this come along, they will be. We've had a lot of surprises in the past and I'm sure there'll be more in the future.
Yep, and doing your due diligence and investigation up front pays off hopefully with a smoother project in the end.
For many years.
Yes, and getting those issues remedied.
Joe, what is it, can you give us an idea of what they're finding so far?
I haven't actually seen the videos myself, my technician that's viewed them said overall, he didn't see any glaring problems. He saw some cracking here and there, some of the typical types of things you see in televising, but he didn't see anything yet that looked like it was too all of the ordinary. Primarily, his first review though was to go through and document the service locations and try to get those properties identified. So we'll be going back through and doing a thorough check on the structural integrity of the pipe and any kind of issues for repairs of the main lines that we'll be needing.
How good a resolution are those cameras?
They're pretty good resol, I don't know if it's high def or not, but it's certainly clear enough to see what's going on and, yeah, and after you watch them enough, you can, you get an eye for the problems as well.
It'll be interesting to watch one of those videos sometime, crawl through that.
It's pretty amazing they've got the technology to do that, it really is.
So these are going to be available for rental if someone in the city.
Richard.
We're gonna rent them to a sleep, sleep study place. Sleep medicine department is what I'm trying to say.
Well, when you're looking at, when you're talking about televising videos of a sanitary sewer to you, it can actually advertise as a dirty movie, but I don't think it'd be a kind of, a dirty movie.
Moving on to the fire station project. Space needs analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The administrator had asked us to put together a little information. We understand that the city is negotiating a purchase agreement for the old prep site. But just to be prepared in the event that things go well there and the city is interested in taking the next architectural steps in the investigation of the fire station project. The administrator asked us to put together a memo of just what the next couple of steps would be. And that memo's in your packet, it really focuses on the space needs analysis for the fire station, which would include meeting with the fire committee a couple of times to interview them, document what their needs are, start to get some sizes laid out for those needs. And then put together a report of that so that we're sure we're on the same page with the committee. And then from, based on that, put together what's called a block diagram, which is essentially a rudimentary floor plan for how those spacings might lay out. Put together a few different options of that, bring those back to the committee and the city and see if there's a preferred option out of those that the city likes. And then that really would be the next kind of discernible task, to do the spacings analysis and prepare the block diagram and get that to the point where the city's comfortable with it. And that's the, the items we've shown in the memo there, an estimated cost of that work is seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars if and when you choose to proceed with those activities. Once that's done, the activities beyond that moving forward would be to put together the rendering, the color rendering of the exterior views of the building. Start to put together the statement of the probable costs of what the project might cost located on that site. And then summarize all that information and bring it back to the city council. Assuming that all goes well, then the project will move into the schematic design phase where a lot of this work that's done in these next steps would be beneficial toward that schematic design and the use of that feature face. So I know this is somewhat dependent on the discussion you've got later in your agenda for the purchase agreement, so with that, I will just stop and continue with questions you might have.
Now, as a follow-up to what Joe said, this is really the next step in the, in the development, in the design process that we need to, if we're gonna keep moving ahead here. This really, the space needs is not conditional on having a site finalized per se. I mean, we're close to having the site finalized more than likely, but the space needs is something that kind of goes on no matter what site we build on. And really, if we want to keep moving ahead with this, which I assume we do, this is the next step that needs to be done in the process. Whatever site the city gets, if the purchase agreement is accepted, it will be a four-month, let's just say for discussion, say a hundred and twenty days before we close. Well, in that period of time, there has to be the, you know, environmental assessments, borings, any of the assessment we do to, as best we can, make sure that that site is, you know, clean and it's a buildable site. That will be a three or four month period. During that period, these space needs especially will need to go on so that when we close, we're kind of ready then to go to the concept plan and to the next step. So my recommendation is this is, you know, last time they kind of, they kind of came with the whole shooting match here until we're literally ready to go to more or less, almost ready to go with final drawings. But now what this is, is kind of the next, we, Joe took that and kind of split it up. And the next step in that is the space needs part of the, you know, process. And that does need to probably, you know, get started here soon if we're gonna keep moving.
And the majority of that work would still be usable even if it did end up being a different.
Another site absolutely.
Orientation and such, of course, that's dependent on the exact site.
Correct, identifying the needs is gonna be necessary regardless of what site you're on and laying out a block diagram that fits those needs. Then it's gonna be taking the block diagram and applying it to whatever particular site you set up.
And with two tracks running at the same time, very likely or very possibly at least, we'll know if that's going to be decided by the time you get to that point of site-specific drawing.
Correct.
And we don't need any kind of a motion for that.
Well, you need a motion to authorize them to go ahead with the next, you know, with the space needs study. Everyone had it that way, they should have some kind of a motion, space needs and block diagram.
Comments, questions? Now, this could conceivably have been done before we even picked out a site. Since it's kind of a broad, generic.
The beginning of it would be the later stages of it would be more specific.
Yeah, okay.
And I think it was done the last time, say it was twenty eleven, twelve, somewhere in there. That would have been probably when they had like that list of about nine or ten sites, it's probably the time they did this. Well, now I think we're ahead of that. And what I want to do is get basically to one site, you know, before we got very far into this. I think now we're at that point where we've really narrowed it down now to one, you know, and a couple of backup sites, but now I think it's, you know, time to start this part.
Yeah. Well, in which case I will make the motion that we accept.
Cause they do the space needs analysis.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. So we can move on to legal. Update on think material building permit.
I've really got nothing before you, beyond what Mark had in the administrator's memorandum. Basically, from a legal standpoint, we haven't taken any further action, it's just timelines that we're often future on whether or not we had any recourse. But he does appear to be responding and the EBA has given an additional notice about the foreclosure on the property. If he complies, he complies and it appears he is moving in that direction.
I actually have been driving by a couple of times a week to check on the progress and maybe not as fast as we would like, but there is progress being made.
Right, and I, and from that standpoint, when Mark and I talked about this probably two months ago, it was, we needed to take the steps to make sure that moved forward, but we've done, I've done nothing since that point in time basically, so we haven't ended spending further knowledge.
He does appear to be taking the August deadline seriously. As you say, either he will comply or he won't and it appears that he's going to.
Right, and it appears he is and if not, we've done the appropriate notices and can take that action and make that decision at that point in time, whether it's the city or the EBA having to do that.
So nothing more needs to be done on that, then we move on to a tasty subject.
This is the, I believe, the same agreement we've been using for I don't know how many years now, I don't, Cam, I'm not sure how many, it is, it's quite a.
Over five now?
Yeah, I didn't release that. So it's before you again for approval.
Well, I will move that we approve the lease agreement for Taco Express as we have been doing and I'm planning to be there on Saturday or whatever their first open day is.
I will second that.
On favor?
Not necessarily.
Good. Nuisance property at two twenty-three, laying for that.
This property contains multiple vehicles, large trucks, miscellaneous debris. The owner's been cited by the police department and given written notice requesting cleanup of the property. There has been some activity to clean the property up, but there's still quite a bit of vehicles and maybe less debris. But the next step in this process is abatement, in the abatement process would be to schedule a public hearing. If the property's not cleaned up by that time, then basically the city would have, would go to court to gain access to abate the nuisance. It's the same process we followed for four eleven, Bulleson, and just that properties at least in recent history. So what would have to, what would happen tonight if we move forward with this, it would be, if we move forward with this would be to schedule a public hearing. Or, you know, it could be tabled and we could bring it back next month and then, you know, schedule it for July, I guess, you know. I don't know, Lee, what do you, you've talked to him.
The homeowner did contact me and stated he's aware of the problem, he's working on it, but the vehicle he was using to pull the large trailers out had a transmission issue. And I, just when I went to this phone call, I see that his vehicle is back, so hopefully he can continue, but he has made some progress. And I'm certainly okay with whatever you'd like to do, I mean, if you want to table it, then I'll say you've got X amount of time or if you want to do the hearing, whatever you'd like to do. They're willing to work with us on it, so whatever you'd like, like to do is fine.
What we've, what we've just said, I'd say that we table it for next month.
I would agree with that, especially considering what that property once was. That was the local junkyard for many years. I mean, literally.
Okay.
There was a pile fifteen feet high of scrap iron.
I can make contact with him after this meeting and say, you really better get hustling on it, that's fine.
So I suppose we should do a motion to table.
Make that motion?
Pass that one then. Pardon me?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. On favor?
Aye.
And then we move on to item D, discuss counteroffer for purchase of property for the fire hall. Usually called the full craft site.
This was added to the agenda, I'll jump in there. We did receive a correspondence that arrived in my office yesterday, dated Friday, but it came by mail yesterday. There were three or four provisions in there relative to the city's agreement that was provided, Mark had provided that to the whole craft, based on a previous city council action. All of those items are fine with the exception for you to decide if you're okay with the price. And you certainly have the ability to go in closed session and have an additional meeting. We didn't have time to notice that based on the time we got this letter yesterday, so in discussion with Mark, that's why this was added for your discussion. If you're okay with the price and you certainly can discuss that if you want at this point in time as well, I did prepare a resolution to adopt the purchase agreement, which will allow this matter to just keep continuing forward. So if you're okay, we can have that discussion now, if not, you can direct the staff to put, or meeting notice and have a closed meeting as well. Not sure it's needed, but.
I've got two questions.
Okay.
And I guess in the way this is worded, it's not a make or break, but the copy of the bolt and the mint site plan, that doesn't really exist at this point.
Yeah, we have, and I did, that was one of the reasons I had the box with, I might need to get Fred on that. But it was from the original plat of that area out there, it was also registered, so there was a boundary survey done, property was registered. We have a decent description for this area and I think it can be made exactly what we want very easily, so I'm not sure there's a lot of effort that has to go into that legal description. So I don't have a concern with that, I right now still have it as it will be inserted into the purchase agreement as well as into the resolution. You know, the site plan is what it was before, that's not really what we want on, it is part of lot two, lot two of this plat, full track edition, and it's a portion of that, but it's something.
You really need meets and bounds on that.
Well, we really just need, really probably one call line is what we need to define the property out there. I think if I'm looking at this map correctly, and I was gonna show it to Joe afterwards and look through it. So I don't think there's much of a survey that has to occur relative to what was there to get a decent description. It's a portion of what was created back in two thousand, I think it was filed in two thousand three, two thousand four when the plat was filed.
So wouldn't we actually find out the boundaries from this old plat?
I have the plat map here and we have that to look at and if, the area is well defined, it's just a matter of where we're determining everybody's going to put the line. I don't know if that's been talked about, Mark, with that.
Well, in broad terms it has been, yeah, and I don't think there's gonna be an issue with it.
I don't either.
But as far as timing goes, I mean, what do you think?
Well, a legal description would have to, you know, and again, many times a purchase agreement goes forward, as Mark said, we'd probably be out ninety days, a hundred and twenty days to close this. It is registered property, which means we have to get that legal description approved by the examiner of titles to review the county. It's just a process, it's not a difficult thing to do, but they do require approval of that. So as soon as we have a depiction, which again, I think is really drawn, probably one line to show where that is relative to this lot, we can move forward with that and that's what the description would be in the actual purchase agreement. So that's the only thing that's there, it's a matter of if you think that we're okay with it, what that description is, from the standpoint of city council action, we would have to do a minor subdivision of that to create two parcels there out of that lot two that's in lot two, lot two of this plat. And that's just happens at the next meeting, if that's what you want to do or any such, no, no the difficult process with that either.
Okay, the other question is, with reference to seller representations at eight point two, what is eight point two?
Eight point two is all the requirements, we've always had in our purchase agreements relative to environmental aspects, that there's no violations of federal or state law, which is a very long paragraph, I can show you. Under the, the federal act and the state act, it usually deals with waste oils, PCVs, all the real bad things that are out there. They don't have a problem with that other than what has been mentioned by Mr. Flegel, the routine agricultural chemicals, which would be, I put a sentence in that says that other than reasonable use of maintaining the property, you've sprayed it with, you know, whatever tree green or whoever is doing it does. And that's not, that's not an issue and I would not say that would hold up anything here. You still have all the other environmental aspects in place. And we also have built into all of purchase agreements the ability to do the phase one or anything else we want to do during that timeframe.
Actually, I doubt if there's been anything like that done recently, but it was agricultural land at one time, so.
And that's why I think Don wanted that in there and I have no problem saying that that should be there. That's, that's fine and I've added that sentence. I mean, three changes to the draft purchase agreement we provided, it was the purchase price, it was to change that eight point two to make those two references there. And it was also adding Don is, Don in as a copy on that purchase agreement as well. That's all he was really asking for, it appears from the whole graph.
So actually, the only decision to be made here is are we okay with the fact that they are staying with their original purchase price as stated? And well, it's perhaps a little bit more than we would like, it's not outside the realm of reasonableness, especially considering the price of some of the other properties we looked at and the many practical advantages of this property. Council, anyone else have comments on that?
It is what it is. There is no difficulty going back forth, this is, this is it.
Yep.
Either it's yes or no.
Yep. My opinion is, yes.
We don't want to go through it over.
I don't believe so either, we don't want to start over again.
One way you can think about it, you're ninety percent of the way, you know, basically there was less than a ten percent difference between what they asked for. So I mean, it's not like it's a big.
No, no, it's not a huge difference.
Difference.
And when you put that relatively small difference in price over the many years that, that property will be used, it actually all of it disappears.
Considering all of the other properties we look at, this was still the most reasonable, the least cost wise to repair.
For what we're getting.
I, I think it's one of those, like, handwagon and gift move.
We got, it's a good value for the buck. So it appears we have a consensus that we should move ahead on this.
Scott, Scott.
I have a thought, you have a proposed resolution, I didn't have you add this in when I completed this yesterday, but I think we have a pretty good idea that's six fifteen Tentacle Avenue or something like that, we can add that in. But you have a resolution, it's a very straightforward resolution from, basically what we've used on other purchases, where we're authorizing that. And I have attached to the purchase agreement as I discussed.
You have the property IP on so, street addresses.
We have the lot, I will put in the lot two, block two of full graph edition, and we can have a pretty good depiction of that. That's the only thing I think that the legal description is somewhat there, in file play, that I will add some language to this that says that the legal description is being determined by the two parties. That's the only thing I haven't put in the resolution, and I would suggest that be here as well, when we get it filed.
How does this address the survey?
In the purchase agreement, it's addressed that we are responsible for obtaining a survey that we cover again.
I guess I could spend an hour reading this over.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, there was no intent to do that, we got the letter yesterday, and Mark and I said, look, this was the agreement that went out, we had three changes to it from what we normally and standardly use. I, I think that was, shows you it's a pretty straightforward agreement, we've always done that in packs, so.
No surprises.
No, none whatsoever, we have the authority to look at it, we have contingencies in the agreement, that one is the approval by the council, but that's the approval of the agreement itself. The agreement, purchase agreement itself also has contingencies that allow us to say, wait, environmentally it doesn't work, or there's title issues, we can't deal with this. So we have those provisions that would do in the agreement that allow us to come back and say, look, this is not going to work. I highly doubt that's the problem, knowing that this was platted and registered eleven years ago roughly. So I don't see that as an issue. And, but we do have every diligence period built in, and it allows us to move forward if you decide to do that.
What number would this be?
I'd have to look at that, I don't know. You could pass it and we can get a number. I don't know, is that okay to do that?
Sure, I, I, I think, you know, again, having a number or not on a resolution really doesn't matter at the end of the day. But we, we can insert that, we'll have the address in there, like I said, I'm, we have the contingencies covered in the first thing. So it is really, if you're okay with the dollar amount, it's okay to go for it.
And is it, Scott, is it normal, again, I don't know if we asked you this last month, but as far as the boundary survey goes for the seller to pay for that?
Certainly, it's a situation of a negotiable aspect. They're going to say, we did a survey back in two thousand four, nothing's changed, other than we're going to have another line yet.
Okay.
You know, we talked about that before, that we were, you know, this was the price, and we'll cover that, buyer covers it, does this, that, the other. The way it is right now, it's covered by us as the buyer, both parties have to come up with a final legal description, there's no question. So it behooves both parties to do that. I just don't see that this is a real extensive survey when you have a previous survey with all the calls on it.
Okay, so it shouldn't be a.
I, I don't, that's why I know Joe was talking about that last time. But yeah, we have a survey, the calls are there, it's a matter of figuring out where we go.
Okay, to determine exactly where that line lies.
The resolution would be oh six, two thousand fifteen, oh six? Because the last thing we did was the zip rail line.
I was trying to dig for that, and I'm like.
Yeah, it's in the net.
Oh, you're right. There you go.
Gentlemen? We have a motion to accept resolution twenty fifteen oh six.
So moved. One second then.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, we move forward. And then we would move on to number ten, old business update on municipal pool repairs.
Basically, after talking to commercial pool, they would not be able to do the work until probably later next week. And then talking to Steve and looking at the whole process of the paint curing and the weather, I don't think there's enough time to get that done. I think we're going to run a risk of the paint, you know, if it gets too cold, isn't going to dry right. And this is a, obviously, it's such a huge job and expense that it would be better to wait until after the season's over. And Steve and I went and looked at the pool again on Monday. And I don't think from a paint standpoint, it's, it's really in that bad a shape. I mean, you can't see where there's peeling paint or anything like that. But I think to do it in the fall would be a better situation. We'll have higher temperatures, higher at night especially, and once it closes, you know, it's still, it's the end of August, so if we can get them, get it scheduled not too far after that, then that should be fine. I do have some concern with this commercial pool painting company, and I would like to talk further with Olympic about it too. So you don't have to take any action or anything at this point, but I just wanted the council to be aware of, kind of aware of this, of this.
So the money stays in our bank account for?
Yeah, it's a good way to look at it, yes, for a couple more months anyway, several months.
Exactly. Possibly till next year, depending upon what the weather gives us this fall. Okay, then we move on to eleven, new business, who hiring lifeguards and pool managers? And we have Sarah Benrud, Alan Belky, Ethan Coda, Clara Flicky, Sarah Helderbrand as assistant manager, Mark Quan, Siri Quan, Freddie Ralston, assistant manager, lifeguard, water safety inspector, Roxy Ralston, lifeguard, pool manager, and Savannah Smith is another lifeguard. Motion to approve the hiring of.
So moved. One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Is that Brad and Doug? Who did the motion and second?
I did.
All right.
And item B, approve flicker license at FW post one four one, another annual thing.
One second then.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Item C, amend solid waste hauler's license to allow regular commercial pickup.
Um, it's solid waste again, let's see, it's like the issue that just keeps going. Here I thought we were just dealing with the county on this, but, I mean, because we have our own situations that are popped up here. Basically, we got a call from two different businesses, and I had one come in to see me about their rates from waste management going up approximately eighteen percent. I had requests from two of them that they would like to get, look at, or get close from other companies. In reviewing the ordinance, administrative policy twenty-five, which covers solid waste, and then the license for waste management, basically, in a nutshell, as I say in my memo, our license with waste management really covers residential. We regulate residential rates, we do the billing, the city has set up a utility as part of ministry utilities for, for solid waste. And so we contract with waste management, just like we used to do with Girls. Commercial is different, commercial's not covered by administrative policy, and it's not part of the utilities we operate it right now, it could be added in the future. But right now, basically, the city closely regulates and bills out residential. So commercial, because of the license issuance, and it was really a carryover from Ron Gross's business, the commercial regular pickup and recycling went from Ron Gross to waste management. And so I recall when that license was transferred, there was some discussion about, and I've talked to somebody about this one year, and after a year we relooked at that, or if the rates went up. I haven't gone back to listen to the video or anything, but I do recall some discussion on those lines. Well, the years have more than up, and the rates have gone up, so I'm bringing this back again, and I've talked to Plumb, you have a letter from them, and then this is where Mr. Gibson could speak to the council, we would like to.
Yeah, we would like to be, to get our license amended to pick up commercial in the city of Kenyon.
Now, the council has the ability to say, we're going to keep one hauler, or we're going to have ten haulers. I mean, this is still under the purview of the council as far as how many licenses they issue, but this is not by nature the same as the residential pickup. We don't have the same involvement, we don't do the billing, all that kind of stuff. So really by nature, this is, I'm not saying it has to be open to multiple licenses, but I mean, it's such that the businesses contract, or they've got a, they pick out, you know, in this case it's waste management, but waste management bills directly to the business. So it's really a, the city's kind of out of it, it's not always to be looked at.
Except requiring that, we got.
Exactly.
Is it similar to a roll off policy?
Yes, you could look at it that way. I mean, you can choose to have one hauler for all of them, or, but I mean, the reality of it is, the businesses deal directly with the company. And we have no control over it, so one way to control it would be to have competition, yes.
I don't see any reason why we should control it.
But we don't want to go like Bloomington, whether they got twelve or seventeen, fifteen up there now, they're talking about? You know, they're having problems, and that we don't need.
Most of this will be, by nature of where the commercial entities are located, will be concentrated though to, you know, maybe three or four areas. So like in, if, if we were talking about three or four haulers for the whole city, yeah, that would concern me having all those trucks. But this is really mostly isolated to the, to second, to downtown, you know, to the commercial areas of town where there's state highway access, so I'm not quite as worried about the truck traffic in that respect. And you would have three, if both of these were approved, then there would be three haulers. And I think, you know, you don't want to get, like you're saying, like you don't want too many of them either.
Since there has been a large price increase from the current hauler, competition would definitely be a good thing. Since everybody else, they're sure the businesses would be happy to have the choice, and since we've already authorized both Gibson and Flum to do the temporary roll offs, it's only fair, in my opinion, to authorize both of them to offer this service also.
Making that a motion?
Will that take like a year or so, or are we going to renew it every year?
Yeah, you don't, actually, January.
He's coming up every, every January.
So these will be.
Every January, when we have that long agenda with all the things that have to be reauthorized.
Five months or six, these will be six.
And yes, right, I am making that a motion, and we amend the policy to allow both Gibson and Flum to offer commercial dumpster service.
One second then.
Or do you want to say commercial solid waste pickup, because some of the people won't have necessarily have dumpsters?
No, I mean, the, the businesses though.
Yeah.
Basically, we're not trying people who pay their bill themselves.
Commercial, commercial solid waste.
Good.
And they call waste management also, and they automatically.
They already, they already have that, right?
Yep, they still will be able to go out with that.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say it's a eight, sound like two.
But actually, this is to amend Gibson and Flum's license to allow them to do commercial solid waste pickup regularly.
Now, I have a question in addition to the clarification.
Temporary dumpsters.
Recycling, waste management does all the commercial recycling, and do you guys do commercial recycling?
Cardboard, basically is what we.
Okay, so I think the way you should do is amend that for commercial solid waste and recycling, because otherwise they'll still have to use waste management really, in effect, if you don't change the license for both, you know, for recycling.
But they don't charge for recycling, do they?
I think what he's talking about is like Donald Fred's down there, where they have great big pallets full of cardboard, he has so much cardboard.
But does, does not recycling come into the same overall umbrella of solid waste? As far as the county is concerned?
I understand that, I'm just saying it might be better just to clarify it and add that to the motion.
Okay, point taken, and we will add recycling out.
Is this just commercial or is this residence too?
This is just commercial.
So what's wrong with residential?
Well, the difference with residential is that the city regulates the rates, and they can't raise the rates for three years. So they're charging the same rates that Ron Gross charged, and the city regulates and will continue to regulate, at least the way the ordinance is now, the rates. So they can't raise the rates for commercial, they can raise the rates to whatever they want.
Okay, so then if something happened down the road, this could change to residential too then?
It could, yeah, it's, I mean, yeah, that ordinance could be amended to, to, yeah.
Once you, at the end of that three years, once you didn't like walk for bids or any, for your residential service.
That remains to be determined.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's, yeah, it's possible, but the city really hasn't bid thing. We license here, we don't have a municipal contract type setup.
Well, it'd be more of a RFP.
Yeah, there are ways we could organize collection, we could do a lot of different things. But the reality is, we issue a license, and that license is what the council wants to do. So however you want to determine, call whatever you want, that's how you determine what was issued and what was transferred to waste management. It is a license, it's not a contract, we're not, you know, organizing collection or anything like that. The city certainly could, whenever it wanted to, if you as council members wanted to add other licensees, you could issue other licenses as well. That's something we can look at in the future, but you did do this, and you issued a license for residential, and it's three years left on it, I believe.
Well, not three years left, it was a total of three years.
Was it total of three or?
Yeah, it was total of three.
Okay, okay, okay.
And at the time that that.
Left two years.
Yeah, it's less than two.
Then there'd be negotiation with waste management as to what the rates would be going forward. And if that was unsatisfactory, we could potentially put out a request for proposal for this is the service we want to contract with someone, and.
That's possible, yes.
Works for me.
Do you want me to read back the motion that I wrote now?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Angel, seconded by Nielsen, to authorize commercial solid waste and recycling pickup by Plumb and Gibson.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, good, that's behind us. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and D, EDA land acquisition, fence going gravity, any further information on that?
No, it's just information, council will be aware of it. No, it's just information. Council be aware of it.
No, no answer back from the?
No, no.
It's not like it's something that hasn't been sitting there for years with no action.
Yeah, it'll take some time. They'll have to send their attorneys.
Uh, request for outdoor band on May thirtieth at the liquor store.
Um, the liquor store manager is asking to get council approval to have a outdoor concert on May thirtieth in the back alley in the side area of the municipal. The street sidewalk would not be affected. There's a map of the proposed area. And you talked about that in the memo in your package. So because it's an outdoor event, it should be approved by the council.
And that would be closing off that, that alley.
Yeah, for that period of time.
And presumably, and then take the fences down and open the alley up again as soon as business is over for the night. I realize it's only closing off a small portion of the alley, and there'd still be access in case of an emergency, but it should be for as short a time as possible.
Yep, you can put down the motion or I can let him know.
Any issues, Scott, on this?
No, not really. We have the ability to do that. The only thing would be is if there's something strange in the contract, and when that comes, Mark and I will talk about it. Other than that, it, you know, we had that contract previously with another entity, and it was just a few tweaks that were done, and it was fine.
I'm sure this entity will come around if there's any issues.
Yeah.
Yes, they will. We'll get the police department on this if there are any issues.
I know, I know.
Well, I have bought the liquor store for trying to get their business, and this is great. So I will make a motion that we approve this request.
I'll second that now.
You do it again. Pick him this time.
Doug?
Yeah. I think they've got a little wire underneath here so they can synchronize. On favor?
Aye.
Uh, item E. Minnesota City's Insurance Trust Liability Coverage waiver. Reminds to, do we want to spend more money to set a higher liability limit or not?
Yeah, exactly. This is a annual decision the council has to make, whether they want to stay within the state statute limit or whether they want basically by excess coverage. In the past, the city's chosen not to basically waive that liability limit and just stick with the state limits for single and aggregate claims.
And I personally see no reason to change that policy right now. So I would move that we.
Now, in, in an extreme case, should there be an excessive and more founded fault, would we at that point be able to say that, yes, we could certainly see that it would be more to pay more than that and do so? Or would we have to stick with our, oh, sorry, that, that's all you get?
What this is dealing with is basically the tort cap, the, the tort cap immunities, basically. You wouldn't have coverage to cover it, so you would have to come up with the money out of the general fund to do that. Keeping in mind that in, in Mark attached a memo from the league on this, which is pretty good at explaining this, there are claims that are covered by the caps on the immunities. And we have other coverage that deals with that, but there could be even claims beyond those as well. That's the risk of insurance. You buy insurance up to a certain level, and that's what you have. In, in my experience with the city and with most, all the cities I have, nobody waves the coverage on the tort caps. And that's really what this decision is probably about. There are other things that are not covered under those caps. And we've got some insurance for that, but honestly, it could go beyond that in some cases as well. So it's a risk, no question. But to your question directly, Richard, no, I don't think you could pick and choose. Once you're either doing this on those and you cover the cover the car, you, you don't.
Yeah.
You can't wait till you crash a car and then go buy insurance.
Right, right.
Well, that's what I thought. I'm insured or something. What I was uninsured was for.
That's not for fixing your car if you don't have insurance. So as I said, I'd, I'd move to continue with the current policy and do not waive coverage. Stay with the statutory limits.
I'll second that.
Back it off. Richard did, or Russ this time. On favor?
Aye.
Transfer of fire department year end excess revenue to capital fund. Matter of twelve thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Yes, we need every penny we can get in that.
I'd like to add too, though, fifty years back, it was a couple of years where the, uh, fund, it was not enough money, so we had to take money from the general fund to put into the capital fund or the equipment or the, you know, fire fund itself. So I'm, I'd like to add that if we have a, the opposite situation, that it doesn't come from the general fund, it comes from a capital fund.
Again, we have the ability to do that. Move by our own, if needed. I mean, the council would have to prove, but we have, you know, any funds, we can move things around to other funds.
Are you proposing a motion including that or just making that a statement for information?
Well, I make that a motion including that.
I'll, I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
And now we move on to item H. You want to address this, Mark, or?
Um, well, basically, um, there is a need for another council representative on the park board and planning commission. Basically, um, that's about the extent of it. Doug has said he's interested in, would, you know, interested in either one of them. Doug has been attending the planning or the park board meetings. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that or, but he would be interested in both, either the servant, either on both of them.
Yeah, I'll accept both of them. Good deal. Thank you, Russ.
I think Doug, I'm sure he'll do a thorough and intelligent job of working on both of them.
Well, thank you.
Motion?
So I move the way you point, starting Hanky, Hanky, excuse me.
H G M K E.
I'm sorry, I, I just recently said the other name, and they are rather close. Very quite dug, and to park, to be.